Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, April the 27th, 2021. It's 9:00 a.m. We're here in the Century Room of the Hood County Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street, Granbury, Texas. We have with us this morning two very prestigious religious leaders in our county here. Dr. Bill Miller again has brought Pastor Mary Carden. And it's M-E-R-R-I-E for everybody in the county from now when you address Mary Carden. So Pastor, would you please come and lead us in the invocation?
I want to begin with a verse that John Adams read and prayed in 1770 after the Boston massacre and our struggle for liberty. And it says, "Though the fig tree may not blossom nor fruit be on the vines, though the labor of the olive may fail and the fields yield no food, though the flock be cut off from the fold and there be no herd in the stalls, yet I will rejoice in the Lord. I will joy in the God of my salvation; the Lord God is my strength. He will make my feet like deer's feet, and I will jump on the mountains." So Father, we thank you today. First of all, Jesus, as we stand in this nation again in our fight for liberty, Father, we thank you that you are over all and in all, Jesus. We invite you into this courtroom, and we thank you that your business is done here. And we say, "Your kingdom come, and your will be done." Bless our commissioners, bless all the county workers. And we say today, "We love you, Jesus, and we worship you." Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible)
Thank you very much. That was very nice. Okay. Today, we have, I'm very honored here to see all this good-looking youth up here. And Commissioner Kevin Andrews has the honor since the Lipan School District is in his precinct, he's going to read a proclamation honoring all of you.
Yes, Judge, I'd like to introduce the 2A 2021 Texas State Girls Basketball Champions. (Applause) I'm really proud and honored to be able to do this. And we have a proclamation here that I'd like to read. It's a proclamation honoring the Lipan Lady Indians' UIL 2A State Girls Basketball Championship. Whereas the hard work, dedication, sportsmanship, talent, and exceptional team chemistry of the 2021 Lipan Lady Indians basketball team has enabled these students to earn a second state championship title. And whereas the Lipan Lady Indians have won two state titles and have been to the state tournament nine times. And whereas winning the 2021 UIL 2A State Girls Basketball Championship brought honor to Lipan High School, the city of Lipan, the county of Hood, on the local, state, and national level. And whereas on Thursday, March 11th, 2021, the Lipan Lady Indians won the state title by defeating the Martins Mill Lady Mustangs in San Antonio's Alamo Dome. Now therefore, I, Kevin Andrews, Commissioner for Precinct 1, along with all the members of the Commissioners Court of Hood County, Texas, do hereby recognize and heartily congratulate Lipan High School on the 2021 state championship Lipan Lady Indians basketball team on its outstanding accomplishment. And further, I urge all citizens of Hood County to join me in recognizing and celebrating this team's achievement and wish the members of the team continued success. Adopted this 13th day of April, 2021. (Applause)
There you go. Sit back here.
Would y'all come down here or stay up there?
Why don't we just stay down here? That's a lot. I don't want my wife to see we're probably good-looking young women here.
Congratulations.
All right, let's do that. All right, let me come in here and clean some peacock girls.
(Laughter)
(Inaudible)
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 And nobody can say no to Santa. And we got Mrs. Claus here, who will do most of the talking since since Santa is reluctant to say he's busy talking to the elves during the year and he's talked out. I understand that. They'll do a wonderful job and we missed you all terribly from last year.
We missed being there.
We missed you and the kids and people were asking about it. And I see you have your main number one helper with you, Mr. Jay Riley.
Yes, come in here.
Yeah, he gets he gets a special present every year from y'all know that, okay.
Oh, do you? I wonder about that.
All right, Mrs. Claus, also known as Mrs. Holland.
Yes, we we really missed last year. But I do want to point out that we had the opportunity to put a mailbox in front of the courthouse, invite everybody that wanted to to write letters to Santa and they would receive a reply. We received over 2,000 letters.
How about that? Is that wonderful? I mean, really, that's great.
Unfortunately, we were only able to reply reply to roughly just over 1,000. Many didn't have return addresses, many didn't have legible. And so but still, it was something that a lot of people reached out to us and thanked. Everybody, all the volunteers from everywhere who helped do the letters.
The post office.
And the post office, I do need to say this. And I'm sorry, right, I should have brought his name, I'm sorry. But the postmaster at the Granberry branch here in town hand stamped every single letter with a North Pole cancellation stamp.
Great, that's very nice.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't have his name, I feel so bad. So that it really turned out beautiful in light of all the terrible things that were going on. But a lot of parents responded, we had teachers helping to get this information out to the children.
School program.
It was a school program through the high school. And unfortunate, well fortunately, it got sent out to other school districts. So we're a little concerned about this year, we may need more volunteers to help write. But that's good.
Good, well, we'll have y'all come back again when it gets closer to that and we'll put up something on our agenda to help you with volunteers.
Oh, good.
Okay?
Oh, good. It really, it was really heartwarming. We heard a lot from the different teachers and the responses they received back from their parents and that these children wouldn't otherwise have had any real Christmas response. So that getting a letter at home was a big deal. Next thing, we would like approval to go ahead and build it again. I would like to know if we can possibly add the face in the whole picture thing and maybe some games on the southeast corner of the courthouse.
Okay, long square. That would work all right, that would not interview with any traffic or anything else and could be safely done, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It can all be done.
Okay.
I do have a question, what about the the book reading building we're gonna do?
My plan is to put that out.
So we set the building the year before last would be on the southwest corner. And we'd like to do that again.
Yes, okay. Southwest corner where this?
Yeah, and it's non-intrusive, it doesn't mess up the grass or anything like that. I think we built railings and everything.
Yes, yes.
Because it's got a couple of steps into it.
Well, didn't we do a ramp? Didn't we do a ramp? Yes.
We built a ramp.
Yeah, well, that's.
And we have electricity over there, so it works out perfectly.
That's good. That's a great thing that the three of you do together. I mean, when y'all recruit somebody, y'all just tell them that nobody says no to Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus, right?
Get over here.
Okay.
I'm still trying to get on the good list.
It's been a long time since you've made it though, but you're probably gonna make it this year, Mr. Riley.
Working.
There's a difference between the good list and the nice list. Don't confuse those two.
The goodness and the vice.
Nice is what we look at the children for.
Okay.
Maybe as they get over 12, we'll look at the good list.
I want to thank the courts, the volunteers, the community. When we all sat down and put this together, we had no clue what this was gonna turn into. But it couldn't have happened without the village that has supported Santa House.
Very true.
It's.
Well, it definitely couldn't happen without Santa and Mrs. Claus and Jay Riley. So he's off the list, he's off the good list now.
Put a lot into that.
Well, good.
His people, his people, everybody. It's amazing. So that needs to be known. There's so many people involved in this.
I know. And y'all do a fabulous job. I like it so much that I'm gonna make the motion that we allow the historic courthouse gazebo for the Santa house and the southwest corner of the historic courthouse lawn for the Santa reading house and the southeast corner to have an area for the children to congregate and games or whatever that y'all would would want to do. And that Mr. Riley and and his famous group
Yes.
will fix, he does everything right and protects the courthouse and everything and y'all do too. So I make that motion from November 19, 2021 until takedown on January the 3, 2022. Now here's second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nobody opposes it? Five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much for everything that y'all do. Y'all do a great job. Lee and McCoy trying to coddle up to Santa right there.
Trying to get on the good list?
Yeah, trying. Santa, there's no diamonds distributed at the courthouse gazebo. Okay, all right, that brings us to item number two. Discuss and take appropriate action to approve the installation of a door in the tax assessor's office. This Andy Ferguson and Mr. Jay Riley again.
He tried to sneak out. Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Alls I'm asking is to move.
One of my doors back where it was in the very beginning. I know y'all take mine and looked at it the other day. And I'm just asking, excuse for any issues in this.
That's.
This first picture is of where the door used to be. And I'm asking to move it back into that position. So when my dealer clerks come, the dealers come in and my clerk helps them, it's not stopping the flow of traffic from the front door to this door over here. So I'm just asking Jay to move it, I already have the door, we don't have to buy another door. Just to move that door back down to where it used to be.
Are you gonna close that one?
Yes, I'm gonna leave that one closed. And that will also leave two positions open on my front line to where my frontline supervisor and my chief deputy can get on the line to help more. That will leave those two desks available for them. That's all I'm asking to happen on that.
You got the plan, you got the plan, Mr. Riley?
Yes, sir, I do. We're just gonna put the door in, it's no cost to the county. We got the stuff, the parts. And we'll trim it out, put it in there and make it work for it and take some of that congestion out of that lobby.
Yeah.
That'd be great. I think that needs, that's good. Once again, Mr. Riley would work with anybody in the county, won't he?
I know, I've got the door, he's got the manpower.
Okay, all right, all right. Do I hear an appropriate motion?
Judge, I'll make the motion to approve the installation of a door in the tax assessor's office.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Cotton to add a door to the tax collector's office. Second by?
Second.
Commissioner Andrews. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jay.
Okay, I'm pulling item number three. And that brings us to item number four. Receive and discuss a final report from the Tyler and Nat Data IT Committee Software Review. No action will be taken. We got two ladies that's gonna come up here and present us with this report up here, Ms. Sharon Seenlander and Ms. Nanette Samuelson. These ladies has done a lot of work. I get calls from people all over the state saying that these two ladies were bothering them. No, they didn't say that. They said that they were asking them very pointed questions and discussing this. So I am now just looking at this, but would y'all like to say something?
Yes.
I guess it's good that we're about the same height, so. So, good morning. Thank you for, one, allowing us to spend the time to do this. Sharon and I would like to present the court with our findings from the software evaluation of Net Data and Tyler. Over the last 11 weeks, between interviews, research, compiling data, together, we invested about 300 hours to provide Hood County Commissioners Court with the information to facilitate your decision-making process on the software. We want to thank the six county employees that that were assigned to the committee for taking the time to meet with us and provide their experiences and insight. And that's Drew Whitaker, Melissa Barner, Martin Castillo, Dean Armstrong, Becky Kidd, and Kristen Hicks. We also want to have a special thanks to Melissa Wellburn for providing over 100 documents via open records request. It might be close to 150, I don't know, I just said over 100. But I know she had to reach out to a lot of people to get those. So she was really prompt and and I really appreciate her help on that. Special thanks to Commissioner Andrews for helping us and guiding us throughout the process. And also thanks to Sherri Remington and Deanne Chaney for answering all of our questions that we had. We did have a lot of questions and they provided a lot of information for us. Sharon?
In the folder you'll, in the folder you will find results from 17 departments interviewed, details of our assessment steps, factors driving the change in software, opportunities, and feedback from two other counties, along with several evaluation documents, including a five-year cost analysis, capabilities, maturity model, and software evaluation decision matrix. Also included are several documents requested from, that we had requested from the vendors. Available in electronic form at your request is the complete response from Tyler Technologies as well as the results of Tyler Technologies IT Security Audit. We did include Drew's evaluation of the audit.
Final thoughts, just in the in the appendix, there's quite a few different documents. But one of them we wanted to point out is a words of words of wisdom from E Rath County. If the court does decide to embark on a full or partial conversion, the time and commitment from the Hood County employees needs to be planned and the impact of their current jobs needs to be taken into consideration. And we'll leave that document with you. We're here to answer any questions or if you want to have a follow-up. We're, we know there's a lot of information to review, so.
Judge, I'd like to pat myself on the back for the brilliance, the brilliance of the decision to get somebody that, that, they have worked tirelessly on this deal. And I am so impressed with with the dedication and the knowledge and the experience that you guys have brought to this project. I've I've kept up with this, I followed the email trails as best as I could. And I'm, I am really impressed and just very grateful for the work that you guys have done on this. This is outstanding work and this is some very valuable information that that you've provided with us or for us here, so.
Y'all didn't charge us a nickel, did you?
No.
Not even any reimbursement from gasoline or anything?
Nothing, or paper.
No luggage, no, no, no paper? Okay, well, I'm offering to pay, and I'd like some help from the other commissioners for chiropractic treatment for Commissioner Andrews to look on his arm for patting himself on the back.
Yeah.
But it was his idea and I think that it was a good idea and I'm glad that you've done it. So we got the whole community involved in it and we can see it. So now that we have the report, we're gonna study it. And then at the appropriate time, I think Commissioner Wilson, you're gonna put it.
My, my plan is for, yeah, we've got the next two weeks, you know, to review this and, you know, then make our decision on the, you know, first court in May as to the final outcome. You know, but, you know, we, you know, there's a lot of data there, there's a lot of information to look at, a lot of information to weigh out. And we need to do that before there's a final decision. Because it will affect everybody in the county in the long run.
I know there will be some things, maybe y'all have questions on it. Like Nanette said, we're always available to answer those questions. If you want us to come in or give us a phone call, we're available.
If you want to have a workshop to go through it, we'd be happy to do that. And we just considered this, you know, community service. We just wanted to help facilitate the decision so that the best decision's made for the county employees as well as the the citizens of Hood County. So hopefully it it's good information and you can make the decision.
Very good job. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, in view of the comments that have been made here, we're gonna go on to the next item then. And that is to discuss and take appropriate action regarding disbursement of insurance payments received by the county for damages incurred to the fire department-owned apparatus. We have Fire Chief Mr. Jeff Young. Chief?
Yes, sir, I'm basically here to answer any questions.
Well, I. I guess this is me that actually initiated this thing. The county pays for all the insurance on the fire trucks that are owned by the individual fire departments. I guess the the question is, do we see that as part of a subsidy? Because whenever, whenever something does, whenever a damage claim against one of these fire trucks is turned in, the check comes back to the county. And then what is our process for getting that check from the county to the fire departments? That's, that's the question. My contention on this is the, it's the, the loss of the fire department, it's their truck. We pay, I see it as paying the the insurance as a subsidy and also to guarantee to the county that the insurance is actually getting paid and a little bit of savings there from the volume discount. So my contention is that that just needs to get immediately straight through to the fire department who is, who has actually suffered the loss.
Well, I thought that, haven't you worked this out with the Toller Fire Department?
Yes, sir.
Did y'all come to an agreement?
Yes, sir.
Could you tell us, please, what the agreement was that?
So the agreement is my, my priority is to get the trucks fixed regardless, to get it back in service, back, back to where they can use it. And I've told them that anything that's over and above whatever the insurance company pays, we're going to consider that as part of the repair budget anyway. So my, my number one priority is to make sure that the vehicles get fixed. Because we own the policy, they can only pay the reimbursement checks to the county. Now, unfortunately, there is nothing in the how to become a fire marshal handbook that says when you get an insurance payment, this is what you're supposed to do with it. But if you recall, the last fire marshal got in kind of a bind over this very issue. So in order to remain transparent and to make sure everything is on paper, my, my decision was to deposit everything into the maintenance budget so that there is a paper trail from the time we get it to the time it gets dispersed. So my only priority is to make sure that the truck is fixed and back in service. Now, if it costs a little more than what the insurance company provides as their payment, well, then we consider that as part of the the repair budget. But until I get told otherwise or there's other guidance on that, that's the way I would, I would like to continue to do that just so that it maintains transparency and it's on paper.
Chief Matt Hutzel for the Toller Fire Department. He did agree to that when you explained that to him, did he?
Yes, sir, he did.
So.
Yeah, and this is more of an ongoing issue. I'm, you know, I'm not at odds with with Jeff here, but, you know, my contention is it's the fire department that suffered the loss. And some of these guys will get in there and fix these fire trucks. It may be a $50,000 claim, they'll get in there and fix these fire trucks and they may do all the work themselves and it may only cost them 30,000. Where does that leave the over? Is it the county's money because they pay for the insurance? Or is it the fire department's money for doing the work and and getting it done cheaper? I know that with an insurance claim, if I go out and have a claim on my pickup truck, the insurance company writes me a check and sends it to me, whether I get that fixed or not. It's, you know, it's me that suffered the damage. So I would just like to figure out, you know, a policy for for moving forward, where do we go in the future?
At the same time, I would not want to promote substandard repairs just so you can save a buck.
No, I agree with you. And it's a, I don't think that that's, I don't think that that's a big concern. I mean, it, it may happen from time to time, but I, you know, where is the, where is the line there? Like I said, it's the fire department that suffers the loss and it's the, the county that writes the check for the insurance.
You're hearing both sides of that. If your truck, if it's mortgaged and you're paying the bank or?
Yes, yes.
They're gonna want that check sent to the repair department and make sure that that vehicle is repaired in case you don't make your payments and they have to repossess it. So same thing with the hail roof damage. If you're buying a home and you got hail damage and the insurance company sends a check, they're gonna make sure that you put that new roof on your house and not spend the money for something else because they have the mortgage on the house. So you can see the other standpoint that if, let's get it repaired quickly and make sure it's done up for stuff. And then if they need something else and they even want to go to like in here, I think, stainless steel lines or something else on the deal, we have never turned down any type of reimbursement for something like that in this court.
Correct. Well, in the 12 years that I've ever been here, the only time we've ever turned down a replacement request, so we had a chief that had bought new tires and four months later decided he didn't like the way they felt or sounded or something and asked for four more tires. That's the only time I can ever recall anything has ever been denied.
Well, I guess, you know, I see your point too, Commissioner Andrews. But what I like here is that the fire department invited the Toller Volunteer Fire Department here and you, and I guess with you, Commissioner Andrews, y'all have worked out an agreement, everybody's satisfied as to how this is gonna be handled. And then in the future, I guess, if there's any, if you can't work it out again, we'll just have to look at it on an as-is basis. Because you do have the problem about the substandard work and somebody doing it. Where if there was a, you know, in this instance here, the county is paying the insurance to make sure that the fire trucks are kept in good shape and working order. That's why we're paying the premiums.
Yes, sir.
To make sure that the fire trucks are inoperable and in great condition all the time. And.
And really, regardless of however we work this out in the future, if if that's what we want to do is start giving them the payments directly, I would still like to see that go through the auditor's office and what, so that there is transparency. And because I don't want to get in a bind over insurance checks.
Right.
That whole, that whole thing is just a big gray cloudy area anyway.
Yeah, yeah, and that's what I'm looking for here is a little clarity on, on that big cloudy mess.
And if I get in a bind, I don't want it to be over that.
You know, my contention also is that, and this did happen with Station 20, is they, you know, totaled a truck, it was a $77,000 payment or something like that. They needed that money to go acquire a new truck. This wasn't a, this wasn't a repair, this was a, we've got to go find something to replace that.
Correct. Now, if they totaled out a truck, that would be a whole different.
Well, it's, you know. Right, but do we need to, do we need to get something in, in concrete now as to how to deal this? And and for your protection also to, you know, make sure the clarity for for how we deal with that.
Well, if you want to, that's not really on the agenda today, it was just about this one disbursement here.
No, this was about the future is what I was, what I was looking for. No, it's just the disbursement of insurance payments regarding damages incurred to fire department-owned apparatuses. So that was, I, I intended this as an ongoing deal, not, not the specific issue at Toller because I knew that had actually been resolved, so.
Well, I, I think what Jeff Young is saying is that since Hood County is the insurer, any checks in the insurance company will have Hood County as the payer on any check. And so what it needs to be done is deposited in the right account and then the check dispersed to the volunteer fire department. Because that's what was an issue before, is that you can't send a government record, which is what that is, back to an insurance company and say, reissue the check to a particular fire department. You can't do that. So what we need to do is, is, is to do that and.
Because to be honest with you, the insurance company doesn't care. You can tell them to send the check to your mother-in-law if you want and they'll cut it and mail it. I mean, the insurance company, they're, they're open to whatever guidance the insurer gives them to do. I, I would prefer to leave it the way it is just so that there is a paper trail and transparency.
I think it's a question of transparency.
Well, if there's ever any question on how those funds were dispersed, I can guarantee you this, nobody's ever gonna say, I wrote void on a check and mailed it somewhere else.
That's, I'm pretty sure that, no, my, you know, I see it as they've, they've suffered the loss. And if they choose to take that money and and get a different truck or or whatever it is, it's still their loss, just like, you know.
Well, they could do the same thing with that. They could then tell us they're going to sell the truck or get rid of it.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with it going through the county and then, you know, getting dispersed from here. It's just from, from the time that the county receives that check until it goes to the fire departments, what, what fills in that gap? What's our procedure at that point?
A trip to court to tell you exactly where it's going and why it's going there?
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with that. I just, you know, I don't want to hinder the process and slow it down for the fire departments to be able to get back in business with the truck that they, that they need to do. So, you know, that's, if that's, you know, if that's what we do, then, you know, we'll just move on and allow that, anytime that comes up, to go ahead and bring that to court and, and get the okay to go ahead and send that on to the fire department if we're okay with that. I don't know if I need to make that into a motion because that's kind of where we are.
That's what I'm doing already anyway, so.
Yeah.
Keep the policy as it is regarding that. And of course, you, y'all do it very fast anyway. And you're, such with the volunteer fire chiefs at all the nine different departments anyway.
Correct.
And just moving along quickly, I mean, nobody's.
Yeah, I'm not gonna sit on it for any reason.
No, yeah. I like the language that all farm and speak. I know you were a farm chief yourself, so I won't speak the same language then. So I don't think we need a motion then, do we? That's the policy that's in prime, that's in place?
And if y'all have any other guidance on on future claims, I'm, I'm more than willing to listen to whatever it is you'd like for me to do. Like I said, that's one thing that's not in the how to become a fire marshal manual is how to deal with insurance checks, so.
Yeah, no, and it's, you know, it's a cloudy issue, but I think that if we just, you know, anytime we get one in, it needs to be on the next agenda to, you know, how do, how do we disperse that? So, yeah.
And, and so this was my deal with Matt, the chief at Toller. I told him just go get the truck fixed. And if it comes in over what the reimbursement amount is, well, then I come and say, hey, I needed to spend an extra however many on this truck. It's over and above the budget that I have already. I mean, I think I had to do that last year is ask for an increase on the maintenance budget. And it was for that reason, for damaged vehicles that were being repaired. So, I mean, it wouldn't even really be an issue until I run out of maintenance money anyway. And then at that point, I would have to come and ask for more and explain why.
Okay, good deal. Well, good deal, thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you for working it out.
Yes, sir.
Good deal. Next item, item number six. Discuss and take appropriate action and allow the county judge to sign the joint amendment, number one, to Hood County Texas Master Service Agreement and Inmate Telephone Service Agreement. Sheriff?
Judge Commissioners.
Herrick.
Judge, how are you? This is an amendment that I've talked to you, all of you about over the last couple of months. And it, we finally got it done and got it through the county attorney and their attorneys through GTL. So this is an amendment to improve the, how we do things at the, at the jail. We've had some issues in the last six, eight months that people have tried to smuggle in letters that have coded with meth and different things like that. So we're trying to figure out how we can stop that. Well, then GTL says, oh, we can handle that, so we can send it to another vendor. They scan it in, the inmate still is gonna get the, the email like on that tablet that we, that the court approved last fall. So this is amendment to do that. And if you got any questions about how it's gonna operate, a GTL representative is here today to speak with you.
My only question is, we did this last year and we gave them the tablets. I thought to do just exactly this. Is this something in addition to what? Is this something in addition to what we agreed to in last year's court?
Yeah, we set up the deal with the tablets.
Yep.
The inmates love the tablets, we love the tablets. Everything's working really good. They've got a lot of different options that they can do with the tablets. And so this is addition to that, that way it's always worked forever is people mail, mail into envelopes, different packages into the jail to get to an inmate. And we're finding here recently that it's tainted with illegal substances and
So this is the new part, is the mail coming through the tablet now to get their mail, not having the physical email, letter, envelope, whatever's loaded up in it? They'd have to sniff the tablet, I guess, so.
Yeah.
They haven't been able to do that yet. They haven't been able to send fentanyl through there?
No.
Eric, you, okay.
That's what they'll think of next.
So the tablet deal saved a lot of problems because of, instead of having a phone, they, they get to visually see whoever they're talking to. So that's been great, the, the inmates love it. It came at a perfect time because it was right before COVID. And so I figured we were gonna have a lot of problems with people being mad that they couldn't have visitation, which we did start visitation up this last week. So everything's getting fixed and calming down from COVID. So that kept us, without having any problems, being able to have that tablet so they could still have that video visitation type thing. So this is an enhanced deal to accommodate those letters that are being sent.
And Judge, Commissioner, this, what this does is just eliminates that, the problem for contraband. You know, we intercepted lots of either drug substances or needles trying to be brought in, et cetera. And so what, and it just eliminates that. So this will only be for letters, Hallmark cards, pictures coming in from family to the inmate. Legal mail will be still handled just like it is now where it's hand-delivered to us and then we deliver it to the inmate. That is considered privileged mail and we can't necessarily do what we're wanting to do for the other mail, for legal mail. I'm sure it will come up where individuals will try to send in legal mail, but it's not really legal, legal mail. We've heard from other counties that families and, and those are trying to send in letters that look like legal mail but aren't necessarily legal mail. So we're gonna discuss that with those counties and see how they are handling that so we can ensure that what is legal mail is actually legal mail going forward. But majority will be handled, being sent to this third party to scan it and it'll be sent to the tablets and they can look at their mail through the tablets, so.
Is there any additional cost to the county for this service?
No, sir. So there's no additional cost. What we're doing is we're extending the contract for two years to recover the cost of the, of the mail scanning.
And this is a good discipline type of deal too. When you take away their tablets and all that kind of stuff, that really gets to them. So it allows your job a little bit easier, doesn't it, Eric?
A little easier.
A little easier. I'm not saying it's, you have an easy job there, but
And Judge and Commissioners, this was sent to the county attorney. He did review it, he had a question about it. We got that question answered, so everything's good to go.
Good. Okay, all right. Do I hear a motion?
Let's see, I'll make the motion that we take the, the dispersion of this, which one is it now?
Six.
Six. Allow the county judge to sign the joint amendment number one to the Hood County, Texas Master Service Agreement and Inmate Telephone Services Agreement for GTL.
To allow the county judge to sign the joint amendment number one to the Hood County Master Service Agreement and Inmate Telephone Service Agreement for GTL, second by Commissioner Wilk. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Here it is, signed, sealed, delivered, so that we can let GTL sign it. And there it is. They do a great job at the Sheriff's Department. Wasn't that fabulous that they found that the inmates are trying to soak correspondence with illegal substance, LSD, fentanyl or whatever, and their dog picked up on it and stopped that getting narcotics into the jails? So that'll look good on next year's report, won't it?
Absolutely. And for the, the public information, this isn't gonna take effect tomorrow. There's gonna be a marketing time period where we'll let everybody know appropriate timeframe of when this will take effect and then some. So, and we have more tablets that will be coming in for those that are in separation cells because they currently don't have tablets, but they'll need to have access to their mail. So we're working on that as well. So it's not starting tomorrow, but it's starting soon and it starts with this, so thank you all very much.
Okay, good luck. Thank you, Sheriff. Okay. That brings us to the next item, item number seven. Consider and take appropriate action to accept revisions to the Hood County Inclimate Weather and Emergency Procedures Policy. Ms. Melissa Welburn.
Good morning. On March 9th, as a court, you were asked to make some decisions regarding our inclement weather policy and, or maybe the lack of what was addressed in the policy. I placed this on the agenda last Wednesday and since then, I've heard from a few court members. So I'm not sure we're really ready to approve any revisions at this time. I think there's still some that want to make some more revisions or possibly leave the policy as is and we address each situation on a case-by-case basis. But it's entirely up to the court, this is your policy and I hopefully can answer any questions you have this morning.
I tend to agree with you. I'd rather see all the changes into just one document where we could then study it and come up. Hopefully, we're not gonna have any inclement weather like we've had here in the next couple of weeks and maybe we could consider it at that time, so.
And that's true. I think we need to look at it more as emergency-type policy though. I mean, we've had another circumstance that came up a couple of weeks ago where we had to dismiss a few buildings for, I don't know, I think it was 45 minutes max. But it just lets us know that there's things out there that could come up that as a court, you will have to address possibly each circumstance separately.
Yeah, we only evacuated for maybe an hour, but
Maybe.
we might've had to evacuate for the day if they had
That's always a possibility, yes.
it could've happened, that we could've been out for a day or two.
That's exactly right.
Judge, I'm the big ogre on this one. You know, I talked to Ms. Welburn about this a little bit, that, you know, I appreciate all the hard work that she put in on this, but doggone it, this is not okay that we demand certain people of the county to show up and do their jobs. And if they don't, we make them take sick time, but let everybody else just kinda ride it out. I'm, I'm not, I'm not sleeping well over this thing. I think that our policy needs to be, and I'll throw this out there, like I said, I'm getting in trouble over here. We give 12 days of sick time a year. That's a lot of, that's a lot of time.
Well, the sick time only pertains to an employee who is out on FMLA. Would, that would be the only time they would have to use their sick leave, which they're already using their sick leave at that point in time anyway, no matter what's going on as far as the county goes. That'd be the only time an employee would use sick leave during any type of closure.
Okay, so not, not just, you know, you call in sick one day? That's not used at that time or?
Well, if you're already out, an employee's already out on, let's say, some type of FMLA because they're ill with something, had to have some type of procedure done, they're already scheduled on that FMLA and that uses their sick leave until they exhaust all of their sick leave. So that's already being done, so this type of emergency closure, it would not affect them in any way because they're already off.
Emergency closures, we use comp time or vacation if you cannot physically make it back to work.
When it's deemed that you can return to work. At this point in time, we're not using any leave if, if a closure is announced.
So, but I
I thought we used administrative leave. Didn't we use administrative leave during the ice storm?
That's exactly that, but it doesn't hit the employee's leave.
Oh, okay, I got you.
Yeah.
If I could follow up on Kevin, Commissioner Andrews, just one, I wasn't clear on. So if I call in Monday morning sick, what, how, what does that kick in?
Then you're, it's gonna be deducted from the sick leave. Now, more than likely, you're not gonna call in sick.
That's not FMLA, right?
No, it's not. And more than likely, now, if you had an early dismissal, then you're still off on sick that day because you've already called in and announced that you're sick and the treasurer is going to hit your sick leave bank.
Okay.
But let's say we decide to close at two because we've either received some type of threat or it's snowing and we're afraid our employees can't get home by quitting time. So if you dismiss, dismiss early, then it's up to the court as to how you're going to pay that employee for the rest of the day. However, if an employee calls in that morning that they've been up all night throwing up, whatever the case may be, then we're still gonna hit their sick leave because they are sick.
And that's our present policy? Policy?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and I think that works.
And I think that the, you know, an emergency evacuation is a, a separate, a separate issue for sure. It's just, I saw a lot of people that, that had to come up and work during this ice, you know, the treasurer's office, I'm, you know, if that's a, if that's a payday that week, they're gonna have to get up here, we're gonna have some unhappy people. And, you know, the sheriff's department, the road ops, maintenance, they're, you know, I know that Shannon and Brenda had to come up and get the agenda ready and there were a lot of people that, that ended up having to come, come in those days. And it just, it seems like there needs to be a reward for their diligence, for their extra efforts for coming into work during those times.
Well, and that's what was presented March 9th as far as reward.
Right, yeah, yeah, no, and that's, you know, and I abstained from that
Yes, sir.
because I had a, you know, I had a sour gut over that deal and that, you know.
But again, that is the court, that is up to the court. It, like I said, this is your policy. I'm not sure we're ready to make the revisions that have been presented today. That's my thoughts, but it's entirely up to y'all how you want to address this moving forward. Maybe just leave our current policy in place and take it case by case. And the main goal to revise the current policy was to help the treasurer address some issues with employees who possibly want to take advantage of the situation. And this was just gonna help her.
Well, we have a, you know, we have a, an original version that, and I somehow got a different version when I got a policy sent to me in 2019. But anyway, we've got an original version and you did a, your shot at it and then I took a shot at it.
That's right.
And then, you know, listening to Commissioner Andrews, this is a, this is not a cut and dry deal here.
It's not.
And it's gonna, I think it's, I agree, it's a good idea that we keep hacking at this because, oh, the, the counter to your argument about a reward is the, you know, our essential services like fire and police, they gotta come in.
That's correct.
And they don't, you know, that's their job. So there's a
And that was the treasurer's whole point of bringing it to court is we're already paying our employees for a 40-hour work week.
And I agree with Commissioner Andrews, if you're already here and at 2:00 in the afternoon, they say, "Everybody gotta get out of here, there's a bomb threat" or whatever, well, they were here, they reported for work.
That's right.
And so, you know, I, that's a different category in my opinion too. So I think we need to, I think we need to keep the pencil at, on this deal.
Almost, you know, I'm kind of of the opinion that you set the bar at, you have to justify it. So, you know, we could change it on, on the backside. We could meet and say, "You know what? We were out for three days with ice and everything else, let's go ahead and pay, you know, that time" or, or whatever. But I think that our, our starting point ought to be, you know, in, in private business, this is how I did that, you know? It, it may be that we couldn't work that day and if you didn't work that day, you didn't get paid that day. That, you know, we've got sick time for, or, or
Vacation, comp, yeah.
We may need to change the language there and make that personal time off or whatever.
Yeah.
Whatever may fit the HR requirements there, but
There's a lot of moving parts to it. At 3:00 AM, when the judge gets a call from the sheriff and they sit down with road ops and emergency and they decide that this is not safe out here this morning for whatever weather, a decision has to be made at that time of the morning. We can't call Commissioner's Court, what do we do? That has to go to the judge and I think that's in our policy now. He makes that decision that we're shutting down the county except for essential people. There's where we get into the trouble with treasure and with you and me. Who's essential? You know? So maybe that's the portion we need to work on because I don't think we wanna take away the authority for the judge at 3:00 in the morning when he sees this is not good, to put the employees at risk to come to work. And if he does that, who's coming to work and who's not? And I think there's, that's the gray area we're dealing with, how we're gonna deal with that, who's essential and who's not. And I think Kevin brought it up that everybody's essential, so y'all come to work. But at 3:00 in the morning, I think if you don't really need to come to work and there's a danger out there and you're, and the school is shut down, there's nobody going to school and here's the county and we go and the kids are at home. So I'm just saying, there's a, this is not a, I think it was well said, this is not a cut and dry issue. We need to, we need to hammer on this some more.
Sure.
Can I just say real quick?
Sure.
And this is why we did put in the policy that all employees are essential unless specified by the department head. Because the department head can make that choice. Like when we had the ice weather, I didn't bring in my group because I wanted them to stay home and be safe. So each department has that decision to make. But if we go into it looking as everyone's essential, then we won't have that issue, I don't think. If that makes sense.
Work on it. Kevin, you can put some language in there.
Because you don't know who's essential, you really better
There's my, the language.
You know what? I think that's, maybe we, we spell this out four or five different ways and then we come and say, "Which one do you wanna approve?"
Unless each department go ahead, unless they designate that my department is essential like Sheriff's Office has done now, you know? And road ops, are they essential? And so on and so on, like who is essential? Because during COVID, majority of us were not essential. But ice weather, apparently, some of us are. So that's where we're trying to make a clarification because it's not a cut and dry.
Right.
So we need to make it a cut and dry. That way we can move forward with no questions asked. The problem I see
During COVID, we work from home with tablets, road ops can't do that.
But, but road ops was also
Yeah, I know, that's why I say, yeah.
They also took the alternating time too. Now, he did put a stop to that at one point because it wasn't beneficial for them. But there were departments that all of a sudden, they're non-essential during COVID. So I think just moving forward, the problem is, is when we have a delay and you have an employee that says, "I cannot make it into work" and then the department head wants to make it all-day admin pay, well, that's not what was acceptable by the court, you know, or the judge. So, or, you know, you have people coming in and unfortunately, we do come in because that's our job. But the policy clearly states if you do not work over 40 hours, you do not get overtime.
Yep, yep.
So that's where we're trying to help a little bit on that end.
And in this last ice storm, we did not do that. We did not pay any overtime for people that came in and worked during the 40 hours.
The only person that received holiday time, because we were actually on holiday, was one from road ops. He did work that time to hit that.
Yeah, okay.
On that Monday, which was
Yes.
But no one else was paid.
So even if you're a regular employee that week, you were still off on Monday.
Yes.
So you would've had to work.
If I get to walk out of here, then we can work on that later.
And we'd be glad, I mean, there's all different scenarios. We had, we had it last year when it, when the ice weather, we had the storm. That's why we're trying to put in policy, whether you declare a two-hour delay because it's not always safe for everyone, because some people come in at 6:30 and 8:30 might not be, you know, beneficial for them. Or do you just say, "Start time 10 o'clock" and everyone gets that time up until 10 o'clock? Or do you just shut down the whole day? And I know that everybody's trying to be fair, but like you said, we're not required to pay for people to be off. We're not required to pay for people to take lunch. We're not required for people to take breaks. So you need to look at that aspect too. That's my thought.
And we need less words.
Less words.
We got three pages of words. We need to cut it back, in my opinion.
And I understand what you're saying, however, just like she just explained. And I understand what you're saying, however, just like she just explained, every situation is different. You announce a late start at 6:00 AM, you've got a group of employees that are already here. Well, they think it's very unfair that they don't get to leave two hours early. But they're already at work, they have a job to do. That's a different situation. They usually need to work until it's quitting time for them. So, I don't know.
Life is hard.
And that's the choice that the court has to make, yes.
Okay, well, let's just table it and let's work on it and come back in two weeks hopefully and
And again, I don't want to stomp on the work that you have put into this, that's not my intention at all. Like I said, I just sat around all weekend with just
This is the court's policy and the only reason we addressed it was because the treasurer was having issues with pay. And who do we treat differently and who do we not? And that comes down to what the court wants to do.
So you're recommending that we table it and work it out, is that what you want to do?
Yes, sir.
Table it and work it out or stick with the policy that we currently have and it gets addressed on a case by case basis.
Could be a decision, we need to talk about it and I don't know if we have a
Because there's no situation that's going to be the same.
I don't think you can. Yeah, I just don't believe you can make a policy that's cut and dry for every, for every situation that we, that we run into.
And not make it less wordy because again, we were
Trying to cover it all.
The treasurer and I worked on this for about two weeks trying to fit in every scenario that we could think of that has come up in the past two to three years.
Well, do we need a motion to table it? We've got, yeah, I'll make a motion to table it.
Okay.
Motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to table the motion about revisions to the Hood County increment weather and emergency policies procedure. Second by Commissioner Eagle, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Welborn. Okay, item number eight.
We had speakers on seven, but
Oh.
Did we?
Oh.
No, I'm sorry.
We did?
Yeah, we did, but
Maybe we, maybe we cured that by tabling it.
Yeah, be sure to come back. Mallory Williams and Brittany Stovall and Sharon Kaiser, Shannon Kaiser. Okay, so, yeah, that's, yeah, yeah.
I missed it too, Judge, we had a bunch on number four on the net data. But I think if somebody wanted to speak
But no action was taken, that's
I think they knew that they could come up and speak if they wanted to.
That's right, so we just had the report and we're going to still have the discussion back in two weeks then. Okay, number eight, discuss and take appropriate action regarding check received from Stonewall Title Company for $26,406.11. This is for the sale of county property at 267 West Lepan Drive in Lepan, approved in the February 09, 21, Commissioners Court. Deposit the money, Leon.
I would like to deposit the money, you just tell me where you would like for me to deposit it to.
We might ask, let's ask that.
Yeah, we've discussed Fund 55, which is capital projects, which is our biggest projects that we have.
Is that what you advise, Ms. Kidd?
Yes, sir.
You're fine with that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, anybody else have any questions or comments?
I'll make the motion to deposit the check from Stonewall Title for $26,406.11 into Fund 55.
I'll second it.
Motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to deposit the check from Stonewall Title Company into Fund 55. Second by Commissioner Andrews. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Okay, next, item number nine, consider and take appropriate action to set a date for a public hearing regarding the designation of approximately 529 and a half acres of land in southeast Hood County as a reinvestment zone under Texas Tax Code 312.401 for the West Camp Ranch Solar Project. Commissioner Cotton.
I'll turn it over to Shay and let Ms. Shay Hopkins let her, let her speak on this and tell us what this is about.
Okay, good morning, commissioners and judge. And what we're doing is we're bringing this back to the table. As, as y'all know, we've, we've done this prior, we were missing the legal description. And basically, the folks over at the West Camp Solar Ranch felt better about just redoing the whole thing from start to finish. Part of the delay too was on their end. They weren't sure that they were going to move forward with the project due to some of their issues with Somerville County. But I think that those were all addressed now and we're moving forward. So basically, all we're trying to do here today is set a date. We weren't able to get the 30-day notice out in time because they didn't get back all their information of whether or not they wanted to move forward with us in time. So that's kind of where we're at is we just want to set a date. This is basically for nine and 10. We want to do everything all at once. The, the acreage has not changed, it's the exact same. The parameters for the abatement have also not changed in any way. So whenever we set that date, we will be able to do the reinvestment zone and the abatement at the same time and that will be the final agreement. So hopefully we'll be able to sign, sell and deliver everything all at once and then they will be able to get started on this project.
Have a date in mind.
Yeah, Judge, for, for this, as I talked to Shay about it and we'd like to do it at the next court, but we're 30 days, we're not going to be able to make it during the May, the May 25th date. So I'll make the motion that we set a public hearing regarding the designation of approximately 529.5 acres of land in southeast Hood County the, for June 8th. That would be the first Commissioners Court. Give us the 30 days, it'll allow us to meet that requirement for the agenda. We need to put the agenda out now and we'll also put it in the newspaper for that reinvestment zone. And I guess I can do it in, in two of them, but I think we need to, because we've got two agenda items. This is number nine and I'll make the motion to set the public hearing for June 8th.
Second. Motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to set the public hearing date for the reinvestment zone for June 8th, 2021. Second by Commissioner Eagle, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero. Item number 10, set a date for public hearing to approve the property tax abatement for the 529 and a half acres in southeast Hood County for the West Camp Ranch Solar Project.
The last time we did this, we, we did split it up in two different agendas and I think we did the reinvestment zone, went through that. Then we came back and put it back on the court to do the abatement. But Matt Mills, you're back there and he said that, no, let me quote you wrong there, Matt, but you said we could do this at the same time if we wanted to, so you wouldn't have to have two meetings. Is that correct, Matt?
Right, that was their lawyer's suggestion and so I said that'd be, that'd be fine to do it that way.
Okay, so that's why we've got that item 10 on there. So I'll go ahead and make the motion to set the public hearing for the tax abatement for the approximate 529.5 acres of land in southeast Hood County, June 8th.
Second. Motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to set a public hearing date for the property tax abatement for the West Camp Ranch Solar Project on June 8th, 2021. Second by Commissioner Eagle, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five
Thank y'all.
Zero, thank you. Okay, this brings us to item number 11, consider and approve replacing the two 2009 Ford F-150 trucks and Constable Ford, Constable Ford's office, Mr. Chad Jordan's office, with two new Chevrolet trucks to be purchased out of Fund 55 at a cost of $55,763.3.
Judge, Commissioners, I
Funny, you could even find two Chevrolet trucks.
The two we have are two 2009, one has 153,000 and the other one is catching up. Last year we had issues because of the aging vehicles. We had a major safety issue and had to park them for a while because the, the brake controllers were going out, electronics. And we don't want to have any other issues. We, we started, they're getting up in miles, we'd like to replace those with two four-wheel drive. The reason we need a four-wheel drive, it's like currently we have a $6 million seizure going on that is in a rock quarry and the places we're having to go, we're bottoming out, the front end of the vehicles we have now. And so some of the places we go in the county, people's private property, there are occasions where we've gotten stuck and had to call a tow truck to get us out of somebody's residence. So this would help benefit that a lot immensely. This is all the equipment installed, lights, sirens, everything, radio and lock boxes. One stop, finish, beginning to end. These are the same vehicles that they're getting, the state is purchasing for Parks and Wildlife and it comes with a high output alternator and everything. And that is a cost of $55,760.3 per vehicle. We're looking at some of them in the quote, some of the items that are to be installed. We're looking at what we can do to reduce that cost on each one at the same time, item by item.
Anybody have any comments or questions of Constable Jordan?
What do we do with the old vehicles?
The old vehicles, understood someone was needing one possibly a little bit better than what they have now. We have a vehicle available to use for that department. Health department's needing one, so, and I say Renee Bates for the other one to recoup some money back to the county unless we have a need for it somewhere else.
Your motion.
I got another question, but this is not in your budget, right?
This is not in my budget. And during discussions with auditor, when I made my, my request for my budget, when I submitted last week, that it was probably best to bring it now before the court and that's why I'm doing so now.
And we're gonna, the mileage on these, what's the other mileage on the other vehicle?
I, I want to say the other one is like 112,000 and it's the one that's in a little bit worse shape than the other one.
Okay. All right, well, I'm going to make the motion to approve replacing the two 2009 F Ford, F-150 trucks in Constable Ford's office with two new Chevrolet trucks and to have them purchased out of Fund 55 at a cost of $55,760.3 each.
Second. A motion been made by Commissioner Eagle to purchase the two new Chevrolet trucks out of Fund 55 at a cost of $55,760.3 each, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All any opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Okay, this brings us to the last item. Discuss and approve the construction of an emergency exit in the children's rooms of the library. Ms. Jennifer Logston.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Cookie brought to my attention, well, we've talked about it ever since I've been there. The children's room is almost like a fishbowl, you have one way out. And didn't really bother us too much because we were in COVID, but we're fixing to start summer reading where we're going to have lots of kids in, in there. If there's a fire or there's an emergency or there's an intruder, there's one way in and out of that room and they would just be stuck in that room. We're, I know that a couple of commissioners came by, Jay Riley came by. We're able to put a door that leads from the children's room into our back office, which would take them directly to another emergency exit out or into the book drop area that is a safe room that has no windows and the doors and it's a, you know, a, a rock room, stone room, basically. And so Jay Riley said it would be easy to do, we would lose some cabinet space, but I think overall the safety of kiddos would be important and we want to be able to have a way to get them out of that room if necessary. I think originally when the building was built, that room wasn't originally going to be closed off and then someone made a donation to create that room, is my understanding. I wasn't here, so I don't know for sure, but that's kind of what Carla has relayed to us. And so then that was put there and they had talked about putting a door in to go out or whatever, but it never happened. So I just, I think it's important to get those kids out of there.
We're looking at about a max of $1,500, right, Mr. Riley?
Yes, sir, between $20,000 and $5,500.
Yeah, that's a, it's like you said, like a, like a fishbowl. They, that wasn't in the original architecture design, I don't think. But I think it was the library, one of the volunteer, library groups that came up with the money to go ahead and enclose that and give some more, let the kids be kids without disturbing the whole
Correct.
So it was a great idea, but you're right, there's just no place for them to hide. Somebody comes in there and you have to get back out through those doors, really no place to go. So, yeah, I, I was one of the ones that looked at it. One of the other commissioners along with Melissa and Jay and I think that emergency door would work real good, back in the back left corner to get you into the office, so.
Yes.
Okay, that, Judge, I, I'll make the motion to approve the construction of emergency exit in the children's room of the library.
Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the construction of emergency exit in the children's room of the library, second by Commissioner Wilson. All those in favor say aye.
We have a speaker signed up. Carol Brennan.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Welborn's standing, I'll pass on.
Okay, good, I'm sorry, thank you. Okay, so do I get it out first, Commissioner?
Where are we at now?
To vote?
I think we've got a first and a second.
Yeah, a motion, all right. Call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five zero. Thank you both for coming down.
Thank you.
Y'all doing a great job.
Thank you.
And that concludes the agenda for today. Thank you all.